I'd like to call the August 22, 2022 Anacortes City Council Meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath. Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal. Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'd like to excuse the absences of council members Cleveland McGrath and McDougal, both of whom are on vacation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters, second by Mr. Young to excuse Ms. Cleveland McGrath and Mr. McDougal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Would you please join me in the pledge? All right, just one announcement from me. Congressman Larson was nice enough to swing by town and cut the ribbon on the 32nd and M roundabout, which everybody knows is open, but the important announcement is, yes, there's still a little bit landscaping to do, but more importantly, we don't have flashers there yet. Little supply chain issue, and we hope to get them mid-September. So I know it's not in time for school, but as we're thinking about that, we'll make sure to watch after the kiddos as we head back to school, which, believe it or not, is coming up in a couple of weeks. So, anyway, we'll hopefully get the flashers installed by the end of September at the roundabout. But the roundabout looks great. Other announcements and committee reports. Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met just prior to this meeting. Councilmember Walters and myself and Planning Department staff, we discussed the final piece of the critical areas ordinance puzzle, which are the riparian corridors, and those have been revised with input and comments from Evergreen Islands, and they are now at the Department of Commerce and the Department of Fish and Wildlife. When they come back, they will then go to the Planning Commission, and they will come back to the City Council. So we are almost there with that, which is exciting. We also discussed the Habitat for Humanity cottages that are proposed out on Fifth Street on some city-owned property there, which was designated for a park, and there is a proposed swap where a park could go instead of that spot. We were shown initial drawings of those five cottages, so we will be discussing that here soon at City Council as well. We're going to have a presentation by the Chair of the Board of Habitat for Humanity, so that's upcoming. We talked about the Day Care II resolution that is, that is part of a public hearing, and there's going to be public notice in the newspaper on Wednesday, and that will be going forward to the Planning Commission on September 14th. And part of that process will be to address parking concerns of the Planning Commission. The last thing we talked about this afternoon was what MJB is currently working on, and they are getting ready to submit their shoreline substantial development permit, and that is dealing with beach restoration and the trail that is going to be built there. And the next step in that process is also a pre-application neighborhood meeting. And just a reminder, as this process goes along with this property, that there will be several public hearings with opportunity for public comment as well.
All right, thank you. Traffic Safety Committee. Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. Traffic Safety Committee met last Tuesday. It was Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Young, and I, and we talked about quite a lot of things. There is a place on Skyline Way where a lot of pedestrians cross that's not really, hasn't really been marked, but right now there are temporary pedestrian awareness signs there because it's a little bit of a dicey area. So, again, just be careful driving around, especially in the summertime. Look for pedestrians. Sometimes they kind of pop out where you're not expecting them. There has been a request for a crosswalk across 32nd Street directly from the Cap Sanay Court Retirement Facility and Storvik Park. There's been a lot of discussion about that, but it has been determined to be unsafe with the speed of the traffic that's coming down 32nd, even with the slowing action of the roundabout. So unfortunately, we can't do a direct crosswalk there, so that's just not a safe option. So unfortunately, people will need to go up to the roundabout or down to the traffic light in order to cross 32nd to get to Storvik Park. We have, we're keeping an eye on Sixth Street, or staff is. There's been a request to extend residential parking east and disallow guimamus ferry riders to park there. There have been some comments from residents. We're keeping an eye on the spots and how full they are before we determine any changes there. There are deer crossing signs on Oaks/Highway 20. There's been requests to install more, but we've, sometimes more signs don't mean more awareness, especially when people are on their way to the ferry. So those signs are there. We also talked about motorcycle parking on Commercial Avenue in the 30 feet near the intersections, and the Council Planning Committee is discussing that, will discuss that, also in relation to parklets, which are kind of close to some of those zones already, too. Let's see, oh, something that came up, that's come up several times, is the parking on the east side of Commercial on Fifth Street. It's the only zone, it's the only block next to Commercial in downtown that doesn't have two-hour parking signs, and we want that to be consistent. So that's going to come back to council, and hopefully, we're going to improve it real quick so we can have that consistency. And then, we, people have been asking about bike lanes south of the roundabout on M Avenue and 32nd Street, and with the new roundabout, we're not sure what that's going to look like, speed and safety-wise. We expect it to be good and definitely improved, but staff will do a speed study now that the roundabout has been installed, and we'll see how that goes. But the idea would be to put a bike lane going uphill toward Mount Erie School and to do charros going downhill, kind of like they are north of 32nd Street. And that's pretty much it, unless Mr. Carter has anything to add.
No, you did a great job. The only other thing that I would add is the speed limit on Anaco Beach Road is posted at 35, but our code is 25, so those signs are going to be changed to drop the speed limit down to 25 where it's supposed to be.
Okay, thanks for the report. Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. McDougal, Mr. Young, and I met last Wednesday. I talked about a number of items, including a request for a refund on a utility bill. This was a particular case where a customer's meter got downsized but not adjusted in our computer, resulting in an $8,000 or so overcharge over the last many years. Under our municipal code, the Council Finance Committee is authorized to issue refunds up to $15,000, but under the Open Public Meetings Act, we need to properly advertise a Council Finance Committee meeting as a public meeting before we're allowed to take such an action. So we're going to do that and then review that request. In terms of refund policy, we ask staff to poll other jurisdictions about criteria for whether or not we issue a refund. We have the authority in our code, but there isn't any criteria, metrics, thresholds for why a refund might be justified. So if we get some more data from staff about what other jurisdictions do, we might put together a policy proposal for a code amendment. Staff want to do a request for proposals for city banking this year. We have had the same bank for a number of years and would like to look at what options we have out there, and we generally agree now would be a good time, especially with consolidation and changes in the local banking market. Staff did some more demonstration of our OpenGov software for us, which we'll be using for the CFP, the Capital Facilities Plan, this year and the budget process. We took some deep dives into the capital facilities planning element of it, and there's definitely some ongoing frustration with the limitations of the software, especially with respect to the capital facilities plan component. So I'm not sure what else to report about that at this point. We're working on it. Staff is working on it. The developers are working on it, and we'll see if we can achieve what it is we need to achieve to have a really functional capital facilities plan. Finally, we talked about options for our low-income utility discount program. This is an existing program, but we don't have very many people citywide enrolled in the program, and especially with high levels of inflation and other pressures right now, we have been examining possibilities for expanding that program. One option is to increase the eligibility limit for the program to 200% of the poverty line, but we also talked about the need to make it easier for renters to participate in the program, not just landowners who live on-site. Potential streamlining of it as well. For example, I noted that in Burlington, if you're already enrolled in the Senior Property Tax Exemption Program through the county, you can get a reduced rate on your waste management bill, your solid waste bill, without additional paperwork. And so we asked staff to poll other jurisdictions for their examples so we could look at sort of the universe of policy options before making a recommendation. That's it for the Finance Committee report. I would also note, I've received a number of reports from constituents. I think it's, it's great that we're having good weather outside, and while that is kind of unusual, it doesn't officiate the need to keep your dogs on their leashes. Please keep your dogs on their leashes. It's great for the dog. It's not so great for other people's dogs who might be injured by your dog or by other people who might be injured by your dog. There have been a number of those incidents. It is city code. There are no off-leash areas other than dog parks. ACFL doesn't count, so please, please keep your dogs on leash.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
I just wanted to add one thing to what Mr. Walters has said. I've been receiving a number of calls over a period of time about dogs also being off-leash, but also some dog owners failure to pick up the waste from their own dogs, and I think that that, you know, if it continues to be an issue, I think that that's something that council may need to address in a stronger sense of ensuring that people pick up after their animals. Thank you.
Excellent points. Please be a good pet owner. Keep your dogs on a leash and pick up after your pets. And on the CFP, on the point about OpenGov, yeah, the challenges we're having with it, the one thing that I've asked staff to really take a hard look at is making sure to get, what does work, kind of like our old CFP, is the descriptors. I think more information is better. I think it'll provide council with better information, so at least we'll try to get that part laid out in the CFP. All right, any other announcements or committee reports? Okay, we're on to public comment. Members of the public, it's your opportunity to address the City Council on anything that is not on the agenda. If you want to address something on the agenda, you can address it as it comes up. All right, no one approaching the microphone and no participants online, so we will move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items A through F. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve consent agenda items 5A through F.
Second. Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Carter to approve consent agenda items A through F. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. On to public hearings, 6A, Resolution 3096, Resolution reaffirming ordinance 4024 and confirming the six-month duration of the interim regulations contained therein concerning the development of daycares in the R4 use zone as permitted use and adopting a work plan. Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the audience. Resolution 3096 reaffirms ordinance 4024 regarding the development of daycare as a permitted use in the R4 use zone. And so what we're talking about is daycare II, which is more than 12 adults or more than 12 children for a 24-hour period. And as a permitted use in the R4 use zone, that means they wouldn't have to go through a type IV conditional use permit, which can be rather lengthy and expensive. And so what this resolution also does is adopt a work plan. You'll see in the work plan that it's a rather aggressive schedule. We are at a staff level hoping to have this done by mid-October, and in fact, we are going to the Planning Commission for a public hearing on September 14th. And so, again, we hope to have this done rather quickly. We've been to the Planning Commission already with some draft language. We now have some changes in that, and Ms. Grace Pollard, our senior planner, will be spearheading this process through to the end for us. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council. Mr. Young.
Mr. Meesmer, I'm looking forward to it. One thing that I would like, though, and maybe I should do it as a side, I would like to have a listing of daycares, how many, just so we have sort of an understanding of what's happening. I understand, you know, the Samish are doing theirs and others. I just think it will give us a panoramic look at what we're doing as we push forward. These are all good things, but I'm just curious about that personally. I thought it might benefit some council members as well. Thank you.
Other questions? This is a, oh, this item is open for public comment. Any's online, nobody rushing up to the microphone. So it is possible action, and I know it's reaffirming a ordinance, which typically we do two looks, but we're reaffirming it. I think that means the council has seen it before, so. Again, over to council if you want to take action on it, or any more questions. Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
Unless there are other questions from members of council, I make a motion to approve Resolution 3096 as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote? Oh, motion, yeah, I got it. Take the vote, please. Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item seven, other business. This is a Resolution 3097 declaring certain retained utility easements to be surplus in favor of the Port of Anacortes. So discussion and possible action. I think Ms. Swetnam is going to lead that discussion. Ms. Swetnam, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council, members of the audience. We're joined also by Brad Tesh, who is the project manager on this project for the port. And so I'm going to just briefly introduce the resolution, and then I believe Mr. Tesh would like to come and provide some additional context for the port's request. So the materials in your packet include a draft Resolution 3097 that declares certain easements that the city's retained since the 1950s as surplus. So just to provide some context, what you see on the screen here is the North Basin area. You can see the Cap Sanay Marina at the bottom of the screen, and so it's that kind of L-shaped area, bold in yellow, that we're talking about here. And so this is a survey that the port prepared, and that the kind of hatched area there is that, is the area of easements that they're asking be relinquished. So just a little bit of background, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Tesh. So in November of 1956, the city adopted ordinance 1201, which vacated portions of streets and alleys in the North Basin area, and apparently, at the time, it was common practice to retain a utility easement across the footprint of that vacated street. So since that time, my understanding, after consulting with Public Works, is that those areas have not been used for utility easements. They're currently not being used for utility easement purposes, and now the port is in the process of looking to redevelop that area as part of their North Basin project. So they've requested that those easements be relinquished, and I believe the reason why that's happening now is that they're looking at some grant funding opportunities, and this needs to be accomplished before they're able to proceed with those applications. The authority for City Council to take this action is RCW 3594040, which allows the city to convey real property interest by adopting a resolution declaring the interest surplus, but because the value of this property, no public hearing is required. So that's sort of the end of my prepared comments, but I wanted to add just a little bit of context about the value for these easements. The port has requested that the easements be granted, or that they be relinquished without payment, and I think that the justification that has been presented for that is that at the time that these underlying streets were vacated, that would have been the time that, you know, consideration would have been paid for the vacation of that underlying fee, simple ownership. So that was back in 1956. The other piece to keep in mind here is that there is, my understanding, and I encourage Mr. Tesh to correct me if I'm incorrect, but that there is an existing city water line that runs through the area that we currently don't have an easement for, and so my understanding is that through the development process, the port would dedicate an easement to the city for that water line area as sort of an offset for the relinquishment of these easements. So that is the end of my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them, but Mr. Tesh is probably going to be in a better position to be able to address the specifics.
Okay, great. And then one other piece of recent history is the council reminder that we did permit the north, that redevelopment project for the port, so I'm sure that's part of it, but probably a good opportunity for Mr. Tesh to come up and, if you have anything to say or ready to take questions from council, either, we could go either direction.
I can do both. Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, council. Thanks for the interruption. I guess a couple of things quickly. Back in August of last year, the condition use permit was granted through the city, and this is, the relinquishment is part of that process of the condition, so it satisfies that. Also, we have been awarded grant funding from the RCO fund, and the $1 million, and the relinquishment is necessary for us to secure that funding. So there's a bit of a timing issue for both these things. RCO requires us to have the relinquishment in hand prior to award of grant. The condition use permit is prior to occupancy, so there's a little bit of difference there. So you can sense our urgency for why this is important to us. And then I would say she's correct, RCO was correct about the easement for the water. That area is actually larger than the easement that we're asking be relinquished, if that matters to you, so. Questions are there.
All right, looks like Mr. Young and then Ms. Moulton. Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Ms. Swetnam, would you go back to the previous overhead picture? I think it's the one just before Exhibit 1.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
That the one?
I wanted to have that picture if he continues to talk. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Moulton?
That is a good, that's the good picture.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Swetnam and Mr. Tesh. I really appreciate the context that you've given. When I read my packet, I didn't see any compelling reason to just say yes. As the packet is presented, I read it as the port would really like this, so we should give it to them, without the context. So if, I would just hope that in the future, I mean, that RCO grant, $1 million, is being dependent on this relinquishment of the easement is a great reason. Also, the fact that the city will get an easement to the water line, and that also that that was a condition of the CUP. So I would really have liked to see that in the packet also, because this is a printed or digital record that people will see when they go to look, like, how did this happen? Why do we give this away? So if that could be somehow inserted into the record, that would be great. And just a couple of things about the resolution itself. There is a duplication of a whereas, and I almost think that that could be, the whereas the port has requested relinquishment of said easements at no cost because the vacation process likely included payment for the value of the property. Whether it did or not, I don't know if that belongs there. I think that putting in the granting of the water line easement to the city of Anacortes would be better placed there. In the final, whereas, the City Council finds that it is in the best interest of the city to relinquish the retained utilities easements as described, that makes more sense if, with the easement being given to the city for the water line. So that's my two cents. Ooh.
Also, with this project, we're going to see drastic frontage and access improvements in the North Basin, so I think that's a public benefit also for the project, on top of the reasons that you stated.
Did you say the lodging tax?
No, the access and the frontage that the development's going to bring is going to be a public benefit as well.
Yes.
Outside of the easements and all those things.
Right, I agree. That would be another good thing to add, and also, yes, and it will be generating lodging tax for the city also, so all good reasons. Thanks.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Let's start with the question of the water line easement, and this might be a question for Ms. Swetnam. What requirement in writing, signed, contractual or otherwise, development agreement requirement, permit requirement, what is it that we have that we know we're going to get the water line easement?
Can you restate the question?
You suggested that we will be transferred a water line easement
Right.
from the port, and that that would be an appropriate trade for this easement area. How do we know that we're going to get that water line easement?
Yeah, it's a good question, and I think if there are already some changes that council would like to make to the resolution, we can incorporate that into the resolution, that that's part of the exchange.
Okay, so I take it then that there isn't a guarantee in writing in contract or as a condition of the development permit that we would get that water line easement? Seems like this is a great opportunity, I think, as staff have articulated here, to clean that up.
Yeah.
And it seems to me that we ought to not reconvey these easements to the property owner until we have established that this is the trade.
Sure.
I am not persuaded by the port's request to do this without compensation, because the vacation that happened 60 years ago, assuming that it was, that it's true that it was done without the vacation, the easements, that deal was complete 60 years ago. The easements were retained, and now this is a new deal. So I would suggest that we do need to receive compensation for this, and a logical compensation is the granting of that easement. I don't think that we can double-count future lodging tax. We can't double-count frontage improvements because those are conditions, frontage improvements specifically are conditions of the development permit. So I guess what I would like to see in our resolution is, first of all, deletion of that duplicate recital that Ms. Moulton pointed out, an edit that notes the statutory authority for this, because it's not our, it's not our vacation code and our municipal code, because it's not vacation of the street, it's just the transfer of the easement interest. We have one recital that says that this action is in the best interests of the city. I think it probably is in the best interests of the city, but pretty much everything we do, we would like to think is in the best interest of the city, so it doesn't really communicate very much. I think we should have more of a justification than described in the resolution, as has been articulated here, for instance, that it's required by the Washington State Recreation Conservation Office for the port to receive the grant and proceed with their development, and we want to see the development proceed, and that the development is in the interests of the city. And then I don't know how in the resolution itself we'll work in that trade of the easement for the water line, but I would like to see that in writing and firmed up, because that satisfies the trade for value, then we don't have to exchange cash, I mean, in my judgment, and it makes sure that that happens and it isn't forgotten. Because... Because the reason that we don't have a water line easement is because things got forgotten 20 years ago, 40 years ago, you know, whenever it was. And so I think it's important that these things are, are written down and retained. Staff are doing a lot of things, and so are council members. People get busy, so we ought to reduce it to writing and have everybody's signature on the dotted line before approving it.
So if I may, I, I think that's a, that's a, certainly a change that we can talk with the port about. You know, one, one thought I had is making the relinquishment of the easements contingent on receiving that easement. But I, but I wonder if we want to talk with the port about that first to make sure that that doesn't unnecessarily delay their ability to access those RCO grant funds. So I'm happy to follow up with Mr. Tesh and counsel for the port and, and find a path forward that, that meets those goals while allowing them to get their grant funding.
Exactly. And in my judgment, I don't mean to prescribe a very specific path forward to the exclusion of others that would work. But I do think that we ought to be able to have high confidence in that trade.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
You know, I agree with part of what the sentiment is about having any arrangements that we have with the port in, you know, writing. It's just, makes for a cleaner line of business and operation. Of course, the mission of the port is economic development within itself, so I think that that's part of the onus, is to show that it benefits not only the port district, but the city as a collective of people. Timelines, though, is the thing that I think that you're going to take a look at with the port, because, you know, again, that's a lot of money, and of course, you know, we care about the facilitation and make sure that that moves forward. So if you can, you know, let us know if we have a little bit of time, Mr. Tesh, that would sort of gauge how quickly this needs to come forward back to council for us to work on that approval of that. So, and I'm sure you don't have the answer to that right now, do you?
We expect to hear from RCO anytime, so.
Okay. But you don't have like a deadline you need to?
Correct. I don't have an exact date. We just know that that day is coming quickly.
Okay. So, okay, so, but it's not like that the end of the month, you got to have it in. All right. So that kind of clears it up for me. I would love to see that water line information in, and it just makes all the discussions very clear. I'm very supportive of this in the sense that I think that North Basin development is something that we've waited for, for quite a while, and I think we've had so many iterations and stops and starts for various reasons. Given the MJB property, the North Basin development would be a wonderful addition in downtown. And so, you know, but I, I'd just like to see those additional little pieces in there. Thank you.
All right. I think I heard clean up the additional whereas, add probably a whereas that spells out the RCO grant for the reason that we're doing this, and maybe a, an edit to the resolved part, maybe line two, something where authorizing me to sign the agreement contingent upon, contingent upon the receipt of the water line easement. Something like that, I think, probably. Okay. And I think that would be it, and we can bring it back ASAP, I think.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, well, I got, so there being nothing on the agenda, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. (end of transcript)